Good evening, everyone. Good evening. This is really a wonderful turnout. Thank you all for coming out. Tonight's Night of the Candidates. It's the 2020 Bennington Select Board Candidate Forum. It's hosted by Bennington tonight. I want to personally thank Mike Bethel for helping to organize this and put it all together. Tonight, the format is we're going to have people do an opening of a couple of minutes to introduce themselves to all of you and the people viewing on Cat TV. And then we're going to have questions. I'm going to ask the questions. If you would like to ask a question, I'd really encourage you to do so. But for purposes of time and to keep the forum moving, I've put cards on this red chair. You can walk over. There were pens there. There might still be a couple. Please write out the questions. I may edit the questions just to make sure they're focused on an issue and to try to put them in plain English and then give everybody an opportunity to answer them. And then if you would pass the questions over to the folks from Cat TV, they'll make sure that I get them. I've got three questions already that have been presented. So with that, we will begin. And since everybody picked their own seating position, I think what we'll do is we're going to start on the left and go to the right. And so, Tom, if you would introduce yourself and give a two-minute opening statement, that would be great.
Hi, thanks, everyone, for coming. I'm Tom Haley, and I am running for Select Board. A lot of you know me. I see a lot of faces here, whether I know you personally or I've seen you around town. I've been around Bennington for a long time. I was born here. Moved away for a little while, and it quickly became evident that Bennington is my home. When I moved back, one of my first goals was to become more involved with the community. Sitting on the Select Board is certainly a great way to do that. Service to the town. Long history of that in my family, and it was instilled in me by my grandfather and my father. And I hope to carry on that tradition, and I hope it will give me a chance to serve on this board.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bruce Lee Clark. I am currently sitting on the Select Board. I was appointed in July of 2019 to take the seat of Carson Thirber. You may remember that I ran a year ago, right around now. And there were four of us running for three seats, and I came in fourth by initially three votes, eventually four or five. Which just goes to show how important voting is, it seems to me. I run for pretty much the same reasons I ran a year ago. I'm really interested as a former career development center, pre-law teacher and civics teacher in the state of Vermont. Did that for about 25 years here. I'm really interested in civic engagement and getting people to participate in government at all levels. And I'm really particularly interested in that area of how service on the Select Board and transforming the Select Board even some more can, in fact, help citizens participate in self-government. I'm interested in transparency and participation. Participation certainly in terms of voting, but also in terms of other options. We know that we have citizens' comments, but I think we can do even better than that as a Select Board. So I'm interested in working with the Select Board on that kind of transparency. There are a number of issues that I think are very important and pending for this town. Economic development being one of them. Also, the pending report of the International Association of Chiefs of Police. And how we respond to that report will be exceptionally important for us. I think the last thing I want to say just in opening is I am a big believer in positive leadership. I really like the idea of entertaining big ideas. And sometimes I get the feeling that we're not as comfortable with big ideas as we could be. And I'd like us to consider big ideas. It doesn't mean that we necessarily enact them all, but we ought to at least be open and entertaining of them. I think it's really important to give people a sense that the Select Board is open to the population that it seeks to represent. And I think we do that now, but I think we can even be better at that than we have been. I'm always looking for room for improvement. I did that. So, thank you.
You can make one more point.
No, I was, that was about to be done anyway. So, thank you for coming and ask good questions.
Okay, Sarah.
Hi, I'm going to read a statement earlier because I'm terribly uncomfortable with public speaking. Can you speak louder? Thank you. So I just said, if you didn't hear me, I'm going to read a statement earlier because I'm terribly uncomfortable with public speaking. For those of you who do not know me, I moved to Bennington with my husband a decade ago. I can say that Bennington's the first place I've lived in a stall that has become joint and just a residence, has become our home.
Can you speak slower, please?
Yes. I found Bennington to be a welcoming community and quickly became active through a number of local groups. I've been active in the Benningtoning Professionals. I'm a former secretary of the Bennington Elks, and I'm a member of Norcheff Lions and the Bennington Rotary. I've been active in the Bennington Chamber of Commerce and been a member of the organizational committee for six years. Many years I've worked and managed several apartments in Bennington. In 2016, my husband and I started a concession catering company that quickly grew into our full-time employment. In 2018, I co-funded the Bennington Food Truck Festival with a downtown business owner. I hope many of you are familiar with that. I think it's been pretty popular. That event has been a media success, and we're currently planning our third year. Truthfully, the response and support within the community for that event are a big part of what has energized me to take part of this committee's seat for Select Board. As a Select Board member, I would bring my experience as a small business owner, entrepreneur, property owner, landlord, and active member of the community. I believe in transparency and that we must listen to the ideas and concerns of our community members. With Putnam Block Project around the corner and other additions in our downtown, I believe that it is an exciting time for Bennington. We must stay focused on enhancing our downtown and attracting and retaining our citizens. Although we face challenges, I'm very optimistic about our future and know that I will do my part to make Bennington successful. Thank you.
Peter?
Hi, I'm Peter Gray. I've been in Bennington since 1968, and I'm 16, six years old. Upon graduating from high school, I worked at Catamount Iris and Johnson Controls back in the days when we had factories. From there, I went to William's Smokehouse where I was a production manager. My Johnson Controls closed, I went back to school and got my business degree. I've run several businesses around here as a store manager. I was manager of my own company for 18 years, kind of a maintenance service. I see some of my customers out there. I served as Justice of Peace. The Manley Athenee Moderator of the School Board. I've been a BSD Moderator of the School Board. I served two terms in the House of Representatives. I was clerk in the General Housing Military Affairs Committee. I've raised two children in Bennington, and I have some grandchildren growing up here I had no plans on running for the Board. It was people from the community reaching out to me, asking me to run, that made me decide to run again. I think we're just going in the wrong direction, and I'd like to change the direction of the town a little bit. Bring in more business. Spend more time recruiting businesses. And bringing, what I'm hearing is downtown or Northside Drive, I think they need to be worked hand-in-hand together. They'll rise up together. We don't need the us-against-them mentality. And I think we could, with targeted marketing and people meeting with businesses, I think we could build them both up. Thank you.
Nancy?
Hi, I'm Nancy White. I've lived in Bennington all my life. For about 30 years, I worked for Burger King as a manager in a couple of different towns. For the last 10 years, I've worked at the hospital as an L and A. Since the mid-1970s, I've watched the Select Board meetings on a regular basis. For the first 30 years, I was always impressed by how the people we elected went out of their way to listen to the citizens, to keep us informed. When somebody came before the Board with a proposed project or program, the Select Board made sure that they understood every detail: how it was going to get funded, who was going to pay for it, how would it benefit the entire community. Over the last decade, I'm angry and embarrassed how the Select Board has conducted business. They no longer listen to citizens. There are far too many backroom deals going on that we don't find about until it's a done deal. You know, the biggest problem with Bennington is that for over 30 years, we've been referred to throughout the state of Vermont as subsidy city. We have gone out of our way to support new groups and programs to try to help people, to lift people up, to get this town on its feet. Looking forward, I see Bennington becoming far more dependent on the state and federal government. I'm concerned about a town that is more concerned about affordable housing for out-of-staters to come here than affordable homes for a homeowner and their family to live in. If the school and the town budget's passed with the water and sewer increase, we are looking at a 28% increase to the taxpayer this year. It's great to hear about all these fun projects and programs on the side, but the biggest problem facing this town is taxes. We cannot continue to watch a taxpayer sell their homes, take their money, and leave Bennington. We have got to keep the people here that we have now. I'll welcome anybody to come here, but we have to focus on Bennington and start addressing the issues that have grown for 30 years.
Thank you, Nancy. Colleen there.
Hi, my name is Colleen Harrington, and I am a lifelong Bennington resident. I did move away for about 20 years, but all my family remained here. And when I had kids, I decided to come back and come back to the community that I had always loved and grew up in, where all my family was located. My father was a lifelong active community member, Mo Harrington, and he served the community faithfully for many years. And his vision was always how beautiful Bennington was and the possibilities. And the past few years, I really got to say, I'm not very political. The past few years, the direction that I've seen things going, I just wasn't happy. And the more I looked and the more I watched, the less happy I got. And I think it's time to look at a new direction. And I think as a community, we need to decide where Bennington is going and what our vision is for the future. Manchester turned their town around. They saw the retail business going down, and they re-marketed and rebranded Manchester as the recreational destination. And it worked. They're thriving. And that's something Bennington needs to do. We certainly have lots of outdoor activities: summer, fall, winter. And we need to market to what is Vermont is all about and what we're known for. And if we do that, I think we can bring back eventually business and growth within, in the economy. But big ideas are wonderful. If Bennington's marketed appropriately, you know, we would have the funds available. With smart spending and tightening down now where we need to do it, in the future, we can revisit things like option taxes. But right now, the people of Bennington just cannot afford all these taxes. And they're all on the backs of the community. And we just need to do something better and look at a different direction in what we're doing within the community to grow fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. So, just before we start with the questions, I forgot to mention my background. I'm law clerk in Doc. My background is I'm an attorney here in town. I own a building that has several professional offices in it. I own it with a partner who's a mental health professional. So I've had my law practice in Bennington since 1988. So it's been a little while. And I've served on a Select Board for five or six years, ending in 2012, and was Chair of a Select Board. So I have some familiarity with the issues that we're going to talk about tonight, but I'll try to be as neutral as possible. My first question is, that I'd like you each to answer, was one of the first things I've learned on a Select Board, which is no individual member of the Select Board can act alone. That is, each member of the Select Board is powerless. Collectively, a Select Board is powerful because when a majority of the Select Board can agree, then they can act. And so I would like you to explain to me what experience you've had acting as part of a team and being able to bring along people of different points of view. Colleen?
Well, I've been the office manager in several places. St. Peters Hospital, I was the office manager there for over 10 years. I had, I think it was approximately 25 people under me at the time, and had to work with many various departments and make joint decisions on what the best course of action and direction for our hospital was going to be. And I also worked at a local law firm where we did similar things. I was the Assistant Director to the Accounting Department to the Chief Financial Officer directly. I reported to the owners of the company directly. I ran many large projects. That was one of my specialties, where I was very detail-oriented. And so I have a lot of experience working in group situations, on teams, part of boards. And so I think that's one of my strong points.
Nancy?
Being in the restaurant business, I've worked with people from all different walks of life. I spent five years in Hadley, Mass. That was known as the Five College Town. There were people that I was able to hire and work with from all over the world, and it was wonderful because I pretty much spent most of my time in Bennington. I spent a lot of time in Bradburn and in Keene. When you're a manager, you have to be able to get people to want to work with you. It's much easier than trying to telling somebody what to do. You have to be fair and firm with everybody. You have to treat everybody the same. We worked with 204 Depot Street quite a bit in Bennington. I think I was the first business that the Bennington School called to get a couple of people out into the community, just because of the reputation. I hired a lot of people that others were questionable to give a chance to, but I told them, "Look, you start with a clean slate. If you do your job, we don't have a problem." And I had a lot of people who worked for a long time for me, which is unusual in the fast food business. You usually have a high turnover. And I think because, you know, I was fair and we had good people, we retained a lot of people. I was always open to ideas and suggestions because, you know, the people around you, they have to count, have a voice too. And I want the people of Bennington to start to get a voice and be able to participate in our future.
Thank you, Nancy. Peter?
I think it's all about consensus building. I go back to my time as a clerk on the General Housing Military Affairs Committee. We were 11, 11-member committee. I think it was seven Democrats and the rest were Republicans. But many of the bills that we brought out of that committee came out 11-0. And it's working with people from both sides of the aisle to get a consensus of what is acceptable to both sides. Again, reporting out those bills on the floor. There were some of them I reported out, took three and a half, four hours. They were contentious. They were, we accepted amendments to make the legislation better and got a majority of the House to pass each one of those and send them over to the Senate. So it's about consensus. It's about listening to both sides and working with both sides and coming up with a solution that works for everybody.
Thank you, Peter.
Would you mind just repeating that question?
I don't mind.
Thank you.
So what I prefaced it with is that no individual member of the Select Board has any power. The Select Board acts collectively. And so, in a sense, the Select Board's only powerful when it acts like a team. So could you tell me what experience you've had working as part of a team and how you've brought people along who have fundamentally different points of view?
Yes, thank you. One experience that I can draw on that's pretty recent is actually the Future Festival. I've been, I'm involved in that. I've brought many vendors together that have very different opinions for better or worse, but they all had to come together at that festival in a short period of time when they're, you know, as waitress and working in the food industry, you're pumping out food left and right. And when things get hairy, you all have to kind of come together to make things work. When you have long lines in one place, and as the coordinator, you have to make everyone happy, or you have to try to make everyone happy during that event. So that is one experience that you draw on, that I tried to work to make everybody be a team player during that event.
Bruce? Really, in a variety of different ways, my whole life has been in that kind of a setting. As a faculty member at the CDC, we were always trying to work together, and there were lots of varying and different ideas about how to do technical education here in Bennington. I've also worked as a team member on the evaluation of tech centers around New England. So I've had to work with people coming from a variety of different places, a variety of different experiences, to build a team fairly quickly and to evaluate a large technical center, say in Springfield, Mass. Even as a teacher, being in a classroom is really, it's really a process by which students come together and they begin, perhaps as strangers, sometimes they're friends, but oftentimes, at least at the tech center, they don't tend to know each other that well at the beginning. And it's really a process of building that same kind of team or a series of teams or and subgroups within that that will work together, learn together, grow together, explain and discuss things. And they learn the process of how to express themselves within a, within a context of a classroom. And that's a lot of what I was doing. Finally, that's one of the things that I think, being on the Select Board right now, just for the six or seven months that I've been so far, has been my greatest desire to see us working even more and connecting more in between the meetings. It's really, that it seems to me has been one of the, it wasn't enlightening. I knew we could never act separately. We act collectively. And the best way to do that is to get to know each other and trust each other and express differences as we have them openly in meetings. So I think that's a skill that I've worked on pretty much my entire career, and it's one that I continue to use right now on the Select Board.
Thank you, Bruce.
I have experience early in my working life. I worked in retail management, so I did have a lot of experience in managing staffs, et cetera. I've also coached T-ball teams for little tiny, small children who didn't really want to be there. I think the root of the question, though, really goes to the ability to communicate with people who disagree with you. I mentioned my grandfather earlier, and one thing he taught me very early on, he was a, he was a conservative, I call him Reagan Republican. And when I was younger, my politics were developing much more liberally, and we spent literally hours around Woodstow debating the topics of the day. And I learned through that that you can disagree with someone and still treat them with respect and treat them with dignity and not resort to the name-calling and vitriol that I've seen in a lot of our discourse locally in the past number of years. I think I could take those skills and transfer them very readily to the Board. As he said in his preface, no one member, no one person sitting up here is going to completely change the direction of the Board. That's not how Boards work. I think that I have the skills to communicate with people, to reach consensus, and I think I will bring those assets to the Board as well.
Thank you, Tom. So everybody's going to get a chance to go first, so it's been pretty this way and that way. Now I've got to mix it up a little bit so everybody gets a chance to go first. And already, at least one candidate has talked about government transparency. And some critics, or citizens, or voters believe that town government lacks transparency. So, Peter, if I could begin with you, do you agree with that statement that town government lacks transparency? And if you agree with it, what would, what could be done to make town government more transparent? If you disagree with that statement, could you tell me what could be done to better inform the public so they know what's going on?
I would say I agree with it somewhat. There are a lot of backdoor deals that are made that we don't find out until after. There are decisions that are made, like going ahead with the salt shed without having the permit in hand, that cost the taxpayers money. There was $21,000 worth of fines in that case. There was a couple thousand dollars worth of legal fees in that case. So I think decisions need to be made out in the open. A consensus between the Select Board and the town manager following what the Select Board has chosen to do. Not decisions being made after the fact that that wind up costing taxpayers money.
Thank you. Nancy?
I say there hasn't been transparency. For the past three or four years, I've spent a lot of time coming to the Board trying to get answers about spending, about projects and programs that I'm reading about that most people aren't aware of. And again, if the projects and programs are going to benefit the entire town, I don't understand why the Select Board has withheld the information. We've heard kind of a lot about the rec center, but what has bothered me about it is everything we've heard about the rec center was a done deal before it was announced publicly. The town of Bennington has had a plan for our future since 2012. Most citizens have no idea what it is. Most citizens don't know what the four priorities have been since 2012. I asked a couple of years ago why the Board didn't set time aside at the meeting to let people know what the priorities are, what has been done, what the money is being spent. The answer I got was, "Did I attend the meetings back in 2012?" I said, "No, 15,000 people didn't attend the meetings." But again, citizens are in the dark. And I would urge people, go online and look at the Bennington Community Visit, read it cover to cover, see if you agree with the priorities. I think citizens should have been kept updated each and every year, at least once a year, and that hasn't been done.
Is that, would you just, could you hold that up so we could show that on TV? And when was that published?
This is 2012. The town held a series of meetings.
The cameras are there.
There was about 300 citizens that went, gave ideas, suggestions, and I think it was a good start. But then a very small group of people got together, chose the priorities. You know, I think at least one of the priorities citizens might have wanted to change maybe a couple of years ago. But again, if citizens aren't going to be involved, citizens are going to just tune out of the town. And I think everybody, I think a lot of people feel like town of Bennington.
Thank you. Colleen?
Can you just repeat the question one more time?
Okay. "Some critics or citizens believe that the town government lacks transparency. Do you agree with that statement? And if you do agree, what can be done to make town..." And if you do agree, what can be done to make town government more transparent? If you disagree with this statement, can you tell me what can be done so that the public is better informed about what the town is doing in terms of town business?"
I believe right now there's glaring gaps between the government, the Board, even the school Board, and the community itself. And people just don't have any trust or faith in how their money's being spent. The projects, bloated would be a nice way to put it, padded would be another way to put it. The projects which are doubling, sometimes tripling, the amount that should be spent on these projects. And I think if we tighten down and look more closely at smarter spending, and sometimes if you can't afford to put an in-ground swimming pool in, you put it above ground.
But the question had to do with transparency.
And I don't think anything's transparent. That's the whole problem.
So how would you make it more transparent?
Well, I think the solution is that the town needs to move into a better information age, including that there could be digital town halls that are ongoing on a regular basis where the community can be input and ask questions. And things like 90-year leases over at the rec center won't happen for a dollar without the public being aware of it. And, you know, there's just so many things. Morgan Springs, that's another one. Pete mentioned the salt shed. Are we going to have a St. Patty's Day parade? People, I want to know this information. And they don't. The community isn't being made aware of anything going on until after the fact, or maybe hours or day before the actual event happens. And the splash pad, people are asking, is it going to be open this summer? Is it not going to be open? Nobody knows. I don't know.
Thank you, Colleen. Tom?
I think transparency is critical to the running of a democracy. The only way for a lot of people to properly cast their ballots is to be aware of what's going on. And I think our town can do a lot better in that area. I think there are areas in which the town is less transparent, perhaps by design. But I also think even more of that, there are areas in which there is a perceived lack of transparency, just because people don't know where to look or find the information that they want to get. While I was preparing for this event tonight, I spent some time on the town website. And it took me, and I consider myself to be fairly computer literate, it took me a while to find the information that I was looking for. And certainly, it gets professionals in there, and I'm sure do much better at it. But communication in government is also a two-way street. I think there is a burden on the town to be transparent to its citizens, but I also think the citizens share the responsibility of keeping track of what's going on in the town as well. And that is something that is very important to me, is increasing civic engagement among the community. Because if the Board gets the feeling that no one's paying attention, then the temptation may be there to do things with the assumption that no one's paying attention. And so the more people are involved, the more people are going to these meetings, the more people are standing up, running for office themselves, the more robust our government will be, the more robust our town will be.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sure. I actually think, I think I've already mentioned transparency. I am of the belief that we are not as transparent as we could be, for a variety of reasons. I think habit has come in. I have pushed a couple of places where I thought a relatively easy step could take. One was to make sure that the Board's policies were posted on the website, and they were eventually. I think, but they weren't when I first got on in July. And the website, I think, quite frankly, from my point of view, having been around a number of them, is not what it needs to be. I know that work has gone on to it, but I also think we could do so much better. The other place where I've been frustrated, and I share Nancy's frustration, is I was frustrated when I sat out in the audience during public comments. I must tell you that I'm even more frustrated sitting at the Board when somebody comes and engages in citizens' comments because of the way in which the Board has created a policy that sort of keeps us from doing what I think we need to do, is much more active listening. It doesn't mean that we can enter into a discussion of a non-agenda item, but it does mean that we need to be much clearer and much better at responding. I'm in full agreement with that. We can do better. We have to do better. I think citizen participation is absolutely essential, and if there's little transparency, then in fact, then there's not a feeling like it's your community, and it really is your community. So the one last thing that I would say is, one of the things I really pushed the Chair to do, and he's begun to do it, is when we go into an executive session, to say whether we're going to come out and make a decision so that people will know that we're going to come back out and we're going to make the decision out in the public. Usually, we are not going to do that. We don't make decisions. We're there to hear something and give some advice on some issue that is properly an executive session. But I think we can do substantially better.
Yeah, so I feel as if the town is fairly transparent. However, with anything, there's always room for improvement. And hearing from both of you, I feel like I'm just echoing everything that you're saying. Upon digging through different things, when I find the answer, I can usually find it. However, there are times where I have to reach out and the information's just not there for me. So there are some places where I feel the town can improve on that. And also, it is upon the citizens, in my opinion, to reach out where the information's just not there. There are some areas that the town can put information out that's just not available to them, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. So Bruce, could you address the option tax, and specifically, as I understand, the option, the local option tax is proposed, is asking for approval of the voters to approve a 1% meals tax, a 1% rooms tax, meaning inns and hotels, a 1% alcohol beverage tax, and a 1% sales tax. Although it's not clear, everything, including food and clothing, and books and newspapers and magazines are also going to be taxed based on what appears on the ballot. Do you support the town adopting all four local sales taxes? And can you tell me what you see as the advantages and disadvantages of the local option tax?
Sure, I'll try.
Oh, cool, I know.
I know, that's okay. Sales, this local options tax, let me try to put it as clearly as I can with regard to sales. If the town majority says yes to the 1% local option tax on sales, everything that is now taxed with regard to sales within the town, everything that is not exempt, like clothing or groceries, like prescription drugs, there is, by the way, a list that's available from the state of Vermont, and it's available on the town website that will give you all of the exemptions. If the town passes that, everything that is taxed now will be taxed an additional 1%. It's the easiest way to say it. I hope that's clear. I think I've made myself, I hope I've made myself clear, that I am not a big supporter of particularly the sales portion of this. It doesn't mean that I'm going to, I don't know how I'm going to vote on that one. I do know how I'm going to vote on the other three. Primarily because the other three have much more to do with choice than the sales. So rooms, meals, and alcohol beverages, I think I am going to vote in favor of those, for good or for ill. I don't like them. I'm not telling you that I like it. Sales tax are by their very nature regressive. However, so is property tax. Property tax is a regressive tax, perhaps not quite to the same degree. And what I mean by regressive is they are by design going to hurt those who can afford it the least. The more money you have, the less this 1% is going to mean. And I get that. So it really depends, how I'm going to vote is going to be determined by how the Select Board decides how it's going to propose it be spent, and that decision gets made next Monday. So here's what I, I'm going to try to do all of what you call it.
It's okay.
And if I don't, please tell me. The problem is that, for example, in this particular given year, budget year, a great chunk of the town's budget increase, and I only mean the town's budget, it's the only thing we can do. Yes, I think there's going to be a major, if the voters approve it, there's going to be a major increase in the school tax as well. And it's all driven by insurance. It's all driven by health insurance. And then debt is primarily driven by prescription costs. So 11% increases, I think is the figure we have, that's a chunk of money over which, essentially, we have very little say unless we want to start cutting staff. And maybe that was the way to go for some of you, if you were sitting on the Select Board, maybe that's what you would have decided. That wasn't, you know, having been in the office for all of six months, that wasn't what I was going to decide. So, all that being the case, it is my perception that the 1% local option tax, if passed, should not be used. Should, I've been becoming more persuaded by a variety of friends, including Mike Bethel and including the people from downtown, who say, let's think big and do something that will change Bennington with it. Doesn't mean that we're going to spend it right now, but put something big out there. Mike has suggested buying SBC, as you might know. I don't know that I'm persuaded by that. So I am torn on this one, friends. I don't really know. And that's about as good as I can tell you.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
I also have been wrestling particularly with the sales tax portion. I have made up my mind at least a dozen times, both ways, how I'm going to vote on that. And I probably will be a game time decision on Election Day. But I will tell you that this proposal, policy proposal for using any local option tax revenue, which they say they're going to decide year to year how they want to spend these funds, this beats a lot of work. This proposed language has no teeth, in my opinion. So if I'm going to consider voting yes on either of those, I need to see that typed up. The local option tax can be a boon for a community. I'm seeing what other towns are spending this money on, and they, for the most part, have been successful. But I think if we are going to be taking the sales tax option, if that sales tax does tend to target the lowest among us in terms of economic privilege, then we need to build into that system, some way those tax dollars are going to be used to help pick them up. Program in Rattleboro, where they take some of their local option tax and put that money back into the community to help our organizations or small business owners start businesses. It's been a big success. I think that's something we could look at. I would like to see some of that money be set aside almost statutorily, that a certain percentage has to be funneled back into the community so that people can build themselves and therefore buy a house and increase the grand list and will bring property taxes in.
Okay, Colleen?
My position is very clear on the 1% option tax. I was part of a Vermont Public Radio broadcast where Manchester Town Manager John O'Keefe was present, along with our Town Manager. And the numbers just alone tell you exactly what the difference between us and Manchester are. And the reason being is that Manchester, most of their revenue from the 1% sales tax comes from tourism. And how they achieved that was, a few years back, they saw the writing on the wall, and it was a retail market. They switched over and promoted recreational activities and brought tourism into their communities. And the difference is Manchester's 4,400 permanent residents, Bennington County is 15,000. And the numbers are, for Bennington County, $800,000 of revenue would come from retail versus in Manchester, $800,000 comes from meals, rooms, and alcohol. In Bennington, so that specifically shows that the bulk of this money will be coming from the community, not from outside tourism, but from the community. And down the road, if Bennington can be marketed more effectively and we can switch our train of thought and we can get tourism back into this area, maybe then at that time, we could revisit the 1% option tax. But currently, until Bennington does that, I think that the tax will fall on the burden of the community, and worse, on the backs of the members of the community that can least afford it. And Bennington is breaking. We can't keep affording more taxes. More taxes are not going to save Bennington. It's going to finish the job and kill it off permanently. We have to look in new directions. And if that means tightening up the bell for a while, then that's what we have to do, and examine spending and where we can save money. And if the school taxes are so out of control and we have no say in anything, maybe we need to look at the Charter and work with the school system in conjunction with the Select Board members, especially if the community, their taxes are paying this. We should have some say in how our dollars are being spent and what increases we'll tolerate and what we won't tolerate. Thank you.
Based on the lack of accountability and transparency I've seen from the Select Board over the past decade, I spoke out against the options tax three years ago when it was put in the Charter. I knew that we would be looking at the situation we are today. Why would anybody vote to pay more taxes, hand the Select Board $1 million, and not know how they're going to spend the money? They say they're going to have a couple of months' worth of meetings. The average citizen will have no say whatsoever how that money gets used. It will be the people who sit on committees who've been planning to use it for their projects or programs for the past couple of years. Again, the average citizen won't have any say.
Thank you.
I think it is a very regressive tax.
I'm sorry, Peter. When you were clearing your throat, I just didn't hear. Could you?
I said, I think it is a very regressive tax. If you look at the U.S. Census report, low-income people spend 8.6% of their money on gasoline alone. Higher-income people, it's down to 2.1. So you're asking the people that are just making it by with no
So you're asking the people that are just making it by with no help to pay this extra tax. And we hear, oh, I'm gonna vote for rooms and meals. Well, right now, we had a gentleman freeze outside recently because all the children in town were full. They weren't full with outsiders. They were filled with low-income people that were looking for housing. We, we have a definite housing problem in this town. But again, getting back to the tax, uh, with this current board, with this current administration, we've seen a four hundred thousand dollar salt shed with twenty-one thousand dollars' worth of fines. We've seen a three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar flash pad put on busiest intersection in town that now needs to be torn up because it was done incorrectly. We've seen the new pocket park that cost a hundred thousand dollars, mostly done through donations and grants. Uh, but still, that's almost a million dollars of crazy spending. You know, um, if you look at the, the state highway department, they built a structure to, to house the salt that cost nowhere near four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's no commitment, there's no dedication to how this money's gonna be spent. You know, why would you vote to give up more of your money when you don't know where that money's going? It's just insane to me. Um. Somebody said, you know, unless you wanna cut staff, well, maybe we should put a freeze on hiring. You know, I, I ran for the board a couple of years ago and we were still hiring police officers. We had to get the, the police chief a new cruiser because his two-year-old one had eighty thousand miles. You know, eighty thousand miles. My vehicle has a hundred and sixty and I'm still driving it every day. But we're replacing vehicles that are two years old with eighty thousand miles. That's, that, we could get spending much more under control. And until they do, you know, I'm all for the big ideas. I think that makes a lot of sense to buy Southern Mount College. Over the next few years, we're gonna be putting in a gymnasium on the recreation property. This do-her is estimated five to seven million dollars. We could acquire the, the Southern Mount College campus for less than that. It has a new gymnasium. It has a dorms that we could, we could use for the drug addiction in this town. Maybe put a clinic in there. You know, there, there's three hundred and seventy acres up there. We could have a place where Bennington could have concerts. You know, you can, um, bring in bands, you know? Lease it out to somebody that'll do that and start making a profit for the town. But until there is a commitment for that money, keep it in your pocket.
Sarah?
Yes, thank you. So I've been back and forth on the options tax after I gathered more information. As a business owner, I have gathered a little bit more information at the last meeting on Monday. I see the, of when investing in everything, especially my business, and in our community, of course. If we don't invest in our community in some way, there's, it is, how, why, why would we not do that? Uh, but the options tax is a difficult one. Shred my mind around at this point with a policy that's in place. Um, can I, do I remember that policy?
It's not in place.
It's not, oh, the policy that's proposed, I'm sorry. So the policy that is proposed right now, to me, seems a little, a little vague. Um, and I, I would like to see a stronger policy before I make my decision on that. But I am in favor of investing in, in the option tax if there is stronger policy in place. And I'd like to see it go towards supporting businesses. And, um, the grant, as Wilmington did, they did a, a grant for businesses that were starting. I think that would be something that we could work on instead of having businesses come in and having a revolving door for businesses in downtown. Thank you.
So Nancy, I'm gonna ask you to assume that the voters have passed the option tax. Maybe not all of them, but at least half of them. And so now it's up to the select board to adopt a policy to decide how to use that money. If you are on the select board making that kind of a decision, how do you think the town should use that money?
Uh, the options tax?
Yes, assuming the voters say we want it and it passes, now it's the job of the select board to implement it. What would you propose that the select board do?
I would check out the college property if that's something that we could renovate. I would put every penny of the options tax to pay that five million dollar property off. Um, every year after that, I would use it to maintain that property. All that property needs to do is break even each, each year. That property is what we have looked for for twenty-five years to turn this town around. Right now, we're like every New England town. We say we have history, we have arts, we have recreation, we have unique towns. We've also had the monument museum. We can't get people here. Look at the people that go to Wilmington and Manchester with money in their pockets. We can't get them to stop. I would use that mansion and market it to every company, corporation, group, anybody we could think of who wanted to hold classes, training, seminars. They could rent out a section for a day, a weekend, a week or longer. Um, there's a multi-billion dollar wedding industry in this country. Find another property in New England that has the views, that unique mansion, that courtyard out back. You could hold weddings year-round. It has the haunted aspect. Think of the free publicity we got when we had that one ghost hunter show. Play that out for every angle. You're gonna draw different people up there. We need to get people with money. Camps, there's camps for people in this country from two-years-old to seniors, whether it's sports, arts, history, music. Contact them all, get them up there, they can stay in the dorms locally. That should be the emergency shelter for the town of Bennington. It was supposed to be middle school. We found out during Irene and the floods, when the bridge closed, you couldn't get to the shelter. Now the shelter has been out. It's too small, there's no parking, and Ben Out has the potential to flood. It came close during Irene. If we had the college property, it has the infrastructure, it has everything we need. To not go up there and not be taking a close, hard look at it right now, I, I think we're missing one of the best chances we've had.
Thank you, Colleen?
You know, I, I, I agree with, with, um, things like Southern Vermont College, but only to the degree where somebody has to go out and do business plans. They, they have to see if there's gonna be a return on the investment. We're spending money with no return on any investments. And, and that's the biggest issue here in Bennington right now. What they're, and that's why this option tax is so rushed. And, and there's a million great ideas out there. But until everybody comes together, presents those ideas, make a cohesive business plan, uh, strategize out and, and do analysis on, on what the return on investment would be, what the timeframe of that return on investment would take before we saw results, then, then I think all of this is just, it, is just not even ready to be talked about. This has been rushed into, and, and, yeah, it, it would be a great idea down the road to have this big pot of money where we could make community investments and, and project-type things to bring business in. But until we know that that pot of money is gonna be managed in the most effective and appropriate manner, then I don't see how anybody responsibly can vote yes for this tax. Thank you.
Okay, Tom?
We're assuming it passed, right?
We're assuming it passed, now you have to implement it.
Now I've gotta spend it. Uh, so, um, well, as I said before, I think we would have an opportunity to take a portion of that money and turn it around and reinvest it into the community in terms of small business grants, grant store programs, and the like. I also hear when I'm walking around downtown that a lot of our business owners really, really want to see a better job done of marketing our downtown and our area. Um, and I think a good portion of that money needs to be spent in that direction as well. But I think the most important thing to keep in mind, that whatever we decide we're gonna spend this money on, we have to look years ahead to see what the ramifications of those expenditures are going to be. We don't need mandates. We need serious solutions that are gonna work in the long term.
Bruce?
Sure. Um, how would I utilize the money? Because I don't necessarily think we have to spend it right away. Um, that's, if I'm modifying your question, I'm gonna...
I'm gonna say, it's passed.
It's passed, so what are we gonna do?
Right.
So actually, um, that's a lot what I've been thinking about over the last couple of weeks and certainly the last few days. Um, I'm actually a fan of, of riding possibilities, but I think we're, I think we need to, where, where I suspect I'm gonna go with, uh, even next Monday with the select board, is a short-term, but also a longer-term, uh, question. And for me, it really does involve, again, this whole notion of citizen participation. So the policy that I've been working on, that I, uh, should be up on the website tomorrow, but on the, at least the proposed draft, um, I think is gonna require people input. And the, and the select board, I think, is pretty committed to the notion of people giving us, uh, ideas. And actually, what I'm interested in is having people explore ideas like what Nancy was just talking about with, uh, SBC, for example. I don't know whether any of that is, I think it's a great idea, it's a great series of ideas, but I don't know whether any of them make economic sense yet because we haven't done any of the research. So I would like us to do that kind of research. So the funds themselves, let's say all four pass, the funds, many of, much of them can be put in reserve funds that we can designate for, for example, business incubators. So that there are matching funds for, um, new businesses that come before the select board with ideas on how they can utilize that money for their own business development. Um, a matching situation, I, I think. The one thing that I'm pretty committed about is that, actually, this would be my basic commitment. If, if the idea doesn't grow the grand list and reduce taxes that way, then it's probably not gonna be an idea that would get my support. In the long run, you would have to show me that the grand list is going to be greater, thereby dividing the tax burden among a greater number of people, thereby reducing, uh, the impact of tax, of taxes, town taxes, and for that matter, uh, school taxes on, on each individual. So it's complex, but I think it involves people like you participating in the process. It involves the select board eventually making, um, decisions on how to utilize that fund. For me, um, business incubators, uh, perhaps property tax rebate for retail, uh, for new retail for a short amount of time, that might, that might be what I would be in favor of. But it has to be able to demonstrate that it grows the grand list.
Sarah?
Yes, um, if this passes, I would be, well, I would love to hear the input of everyone else before making a decision. My ideas that I would propose would be a, a grand idea such as SBC property or another grand idea that would attract people to grow grand lists so that our taxes wouldn't go down and track, you know, have our houses filled and bring new money in to spend money here. Ultimately, lower your taxes altogether. Um, and debt reduction for our town. I think that's important, that we money towards debt reduction because we're paying quite a bit at debt reduction right now. And also, if there's anything left over there, which is how we allocate the funds, we would have something, go towards, uh, grants or matching loans for small businesses so that, like I mentioned, we don't have that revolving door for businesses in the mainstream anymore.
Peter?
Um, I would urge people to slow down and vote it down this year and maybe put it into effect next year. We have no plan for it this year. Um, but if it were to pass, uh, I think Southern Mount College over the next five years, I mean, the payoff that, that Colleen's looking for is in the gymnasium itself. We're, we're gonna spend five to seven million dollars putting in a gymnasium. We would save money by buying the college and we have all that other opportunity up there. Um, marketing, marketing would be a very important tool. I think we need a recruiting team, a team that goes and meets with businesses in other areas. Um, manufacturing and retail, this is what we can do for you in Bennington. This is our education system. This is what we can offer. Other towns are doing it. We need to get out of the ball and start doing it too and attract those businesses here. That's how you're gonna grow the grand list. So Southern Mount College or marketing, you know, and targeted marketing.
Uh, I just, if people may not be aware of this, but Southern Mount College was a nonprofit organization. And all of the campus property except the gatehouse, uh, was nonprofit, meaning that it was not part of the taxable grand list. So you're not taking a property off the, the, the tax base by the town making it a municipal use. Uh, you'd add it to the tax base and it went into a, a for-profit activity. Um, but I just thought I'd offer that to make sure that's clear. Wanted to take, um, a question from a young professional who was a grad, who has since graduated from, uh, college in Bennington. He said, "All of my graduating class, to my knowledge, has left the area. Some of them have moved to Rattleboro or Burlington." As a select board member, what would you do to attract and retain more young people to Bennington? Uh, I just have to add that, um, my wife came here in seventh grade to look at colleges with her big brother, went through the front gates of Bennington College and said, "This is the place for me," and wrote the admissions. Department of the seventh grader's saying, "How do I get in here?" She went to Bennington College, she graduated, went to grad school in Boston and decided living in Boston was terrible. So for two years, she commuted between Bennington and, uh, Boston. And then when I met her and we were recording, she said, "I was free to move here if I wanted." Which is how I came to Bennington. So, um, I don't relate to this question. But Sarah, as a new person here in Bennington, maybe you could tell me what you would do to attract more young people to Bennington?
Sure, yes, I am new. I've been here for a decade, but yes, I'm newer. Um, I, I would like to build the energy off the project. I feel there's a lot of energy going on there. And, uh, there's not a lot open, if anybody's noticed, after about eight o'clock, nine o'clock downtown. And that political younger, even, you know, anybody seems pretty miffed about that when they're going out or just rolling about at night. So I'd like to build off of that energy and see a little bit more robust downtown. I think that would attain, attract and retain citizens. And I've just heard in the past week about five people that are leaving that are about my age, a little older, which is really, it's kind of depressing. And the fact that they were leaving is because nothing's open for them past eight o'clock or nine o'clock. So I think building off of that project and just creating more of an atmosphere of downtown would be great. And events such as the Homebrew Festival, which I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, and having more festivals like that would also build up with that energy. And then just help to attract more citizens and retain the ones that I just mentioned that have already decided leaving.
Thank you.
Not being young. But I was younger when I moved here. Um, you know, retaining young folks really is a matter, at least as I see it, as much as anything, it's a matter of kind of, of developing a critical mass. Um, and that's partly what the professionals group is, I, I'm hoping. Um, but to me, there's several things that are in the way. One of them, of really establishing, um, Bennington as a place. One of them obviously is entertainment issues and, and that kind of stuff, which, um, Sarah really talked about well. Um, and I would agree with much of that. Also, I would say, um, housing. The housing costs and housing stock are... The housing costs and housing stock are not as easily available for the young person coming right out of college as I would like it to be. And that's a long-term issue. We didn't get into the situation of the housing stock being the way it is and being as unavailable. It's a tight market. We haven't gotten into that easily overnight, and we're working our way out of it. I think, I like the building projects that are taking place in the region and in the area. But we really, we really need to make sure that, for example, one of the things that I remember going to a, one of the, I think it was the second floor or the third floor, second floor of one of the downtown buildings, where a friend of my young friend had her apartment. And it was a stunning apartment. And it was owned or lived in previously by one of the downtown retailers. And it seems to me that there's a lot of property there that I would like to make sure that, at least as far as what the town can do, and the town can't do everything here in this situation. But among the things that the town can do is make sure that zoning is set up in such a way so that that is all mixed-use, it's not merely commercial. And that therefore, those second and third floors are available for development as the kind of housing that a person coming right out of college could move into. And if that's already the case, great. If it's not, we need to fix it.
All right. So first, I would say to those young people, go. Move out of town for a little while. Gain some experiences that you're not gonna find here in Bennington. Be exposed to ideas that you're not gonna be exposed to here in Bennington. Then come back and rejoin the community and bring all those experiences and ideas with If we're gonna get them to do that, we need to make some big changes. We need better high-speed internet. We cannot compete with other towns, cities around the country in the area of high-speed internet, which means we cannot attract the employers that these young people are looking for. We need a more diverse community. We need more people of color to move here. We need more people of different religions to move here. We need more people of all different backgrounds to move here in order to make it a truly vibrant, attractive town for young people, because that's what they want. They not only want things to do, they want to be challenged, actually. And we're just not able to do that right now.
Peter?
Again, I would say marketing and recruiting would be a big part of it. More business you can get in here, the more people are gonna come here and settle in, the more state here. Another thing is the housing. We have a terrible problem. I think it's about time for the Bennington Board to look at something like Burlington's done and put some limitations on landlords. We have Bennington Housing Authority, we have Shire's, and we have a couple dominant landlords. From many people, I've gotten calls, Shire showing up saying, "We notified you in writing, we're coming in your house," when they never notified them in writing. Bennington Housing Authority, I had a woman call me from there. She's a single mom, works in a factory here in Bennington. Her rent recently went up to $1,600 a month. A lot of what we're seeing from these places now in these private landlords is, "I want the first, last, and security." Many people, that's three or $4,000 they gotta put up. A family's gotta put up three or $4,000 to get you an apartment. I think it's about time that the Board steps in and sets a policy where they're not doing that to people. The Putnam Project, as everybody's all hyped up about, their one-bedroom apartments are going to be $2,100. I think they're setting themselves up for failure in that. There are many things we could be doing. We could build a consensus and move forward. But we've gotta do something about housing, and we've gotta do something about recruiting and bringing business here.
We keep hearing about apartments. We don't have a budget in this town without homeowners. I'll go back again. If the budget's passed, would the water and sewer increase? A 28% increase in our taxes? Young people I've talked to are gonna leave Bennington because they don't want to go through what they've watched their parents and grandparents go through. You've lived here, you work, you pay and support, and every year you fall further and further behind. But we're worried about bringing the young people here. As far as housing goes, do we have monopoly in our rental market with Shire's and the other government housing units? Twenty-one years ago, affordable housing was not considered economic development in Bennington. At that time, Shire's was asked how much of the rental market they controlled, and they said it was less than 10%. I'd like to know how much they control today. How many apartments do they own? How many do they manage that they don't own? And who does own those markets? And I think if you get those answers, we'll start to find out why it's so expensive to rent. But we've gotta have some balance. I'd love to get young people coming to Bennington, but you never hear about the middle-aged or the seniors. And we're the people who have been paying the budget and the bills for the last 20 to 60 years. We have got to start thinking about everybody in this town.
Thank you, Colleen.
A lot of this is really redundant. The internets are given. We need to absolutely lower taxes. We need to give greater incentives to attract business so that they want to do business here and they can afford to do business here. And by smarter spending, I think we can work our way towards lower taxes to attract businesses from other outside areas. And if professionals have work, they will come here. Where there's work, people will go there to work. And if Bennington is rebranded towards recreational destination as we once were, we can bring back tourism and focus on our natural beauty and our outdoor activities. And I believe that tourism is the diversity dollars that we need most in Bennington. Not really that we're not a diverse enough community, but we need outside money to come in and spend money and then go home and our businesses flourish. At one time, Bennington was a thriving tourism community. You couldn't get up or down the main streets. People had to go around back roads in order to get to their homes. And I think if we focus on bringing back tourism into Bennington, I think we can see our economy and our property taxes lower. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna change topics for a moment, and I'm gonna try to combine two questions dealing with race relations here in Bennington. One was a general question of what we could do to improve race relations, and the other was more specific in that the Bennington Police Department has just underwent an IACP evaluation. And the questions have to do with what do you expect to get from that evaluation? Will you push forward the recommendations of the IACP evaluation? And how will you ensure that the Police Department respects its mission to protect all the citizens of the town equally and on the same avenue? So, Colleen?
Well, specifically, I feel a little uneducated on this topic as I haven't seen the report that was delivered, the $65,000 evaluation. So, I haven't read the report. But to be honest with you, I was out at 3:00 in the morning with my significant other when my father was dying, and the police pulled me over. They saw nothing was going on, and I drove on to continue on to my destination. And I think that some of it is not so much profiling or race problems, but just Bennington is not a high-crime area, and if you're out at 3:00 in the morning, they're probably wondering what you're doing, and they're gonna stop you. And if you have drugs or other things on you, you're gonna get in trouble. If you don't, they say, "Have a nice night," and you're on your way. And in all my instances, I've been happy with their performances. Chief Doucette, I believe, has been a wonderful asset to this community, and I think he tries very hard. And I think, you know, that until we can see the evaluation and study what was determined and what information came out during that evaluation, I really don't feel qualified to either say yea or nay or to disparage the police or say anything against them without knowing facts. And I just don't have that information.
The report hasn't come out yet, as I understand it, but you made your point very clear that you'd have to read it before you could even comment.
Absolutely.
Okay. Colleen?
I think a lot of what we're gonna be talking about here is regardless of what the IACP report says, we need to come into the 21st century in terms of policing and policy, in terms of race, in terms of other things. Being out at night is not cause to get pulled over. Purely. The police can wonder what I'm up to all I want. If they don't have actual cause to pull me over, they should not pull me over.
So, just to tell you, we're trying to also broadcast this. In my experience with Cat TV, when the audience responds, it's that I can't hear the speaker. So, as much as I'd like you all to cheer everybody on, it really makes it impossible for people at home to hear what's being said. So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think we have a degree of mistrust. Whether you feel it's justified or not, it exists, and therefore, we have to deal with it between certain members of our community toward the Police Department. I think that one major step that we could take in the right direction would to be to enact citizen oversight to our Police Department so that there is a process if a citizen has a complaint, that they can go and have a place to bring that to. I don't believe any organization is equipped to investigate itself. I'm very interested to see what the final report says. I've heard rumors left and right, justified or no, but I think that we do have a problem in Bennington, and that we need to come together as a community and stop feeling blamed and start trying to figure out, okay, what can I do to move myself and my town into the right direction?
Sarah? I'm gonna mix it up. That's the way it goes.
So, I've been meeting multiple agencies, and today was the day that I met with the police. So, I just learned the report is not out yet, and I learned that the Police Department has come out with new standards in our Lily basis where there are complaint areas that you can have voicemail turns online. I feel confident in what their Lily's are currently, and I feel that they are holding themselves accountable for their actions. And they have a new ticketing process in place, and I feel, I feel they're in a good place right now, and I feel that they're getting out in the community and making themselves their presence known. I feel, you know, I appreciate what they do, and I feel that they're really, they're really out there and they're really doing a really great job right now. And I am looking forward to reading that report and then checking it out.
Bruce?
Sure. No, the report isn't out yet, and at least I haven't seen it. What do I expect to get? I expect that there will be suggestions. I expect that there will be places that the team found that the department at the time that they were looking at were not doing what they consider to be best practices. All that being said, I think how we respond to that is critically important for us. How we respond as folks who understand that there is, in fact, I don't think there's any doubt in my mind anyway, even though I know many of the members of the police force, they used to come into my classroom all the time. But there is an issue of trust that is not healed. And we need to know how, we as the Select Board, need to react to that report in a way that will help heal this community and will lead to, in my view, and at least as far as my conversations with other officers, lead to better policing, better police work that will help people feel more comfortable, that will get more information where it needs to be gotten. When there's trust, that happens. When there is mistrust, there is that divide, and that divide makes policing harder. Are there stops now that take place that probably shouldn't take place? I think so. I personally think so. But then, I've thought that ever since I've, ever since I've been around. You know, when, yes, I was stopped by my local police when I was out at 3:00 in the morning, and I was an 18-year-old. And quite frankly, now that I've been through law school, I know that that was an illegal stop. They may have been very nice about it, but it was still darned illegal. And their search of my father's car, because that's what I was driving, was simply wrong. So, what do I think? I think we need to make sure, our job, and I think it's the whole community's job, and it's our job on the Select Board to enlist the whole community in doing this, including every member of the Police Department, to make sure that all of the best practices are followed. And if that means community oversight, yeah, community oversight. But I think it can be done, and I think it can be done well. And it's all about, when Peter was talking about building consensus in the court, that's exactly what we're talking about here. Consensus.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, as far as the report, I think the Bennington Police are gonna come out on top on that, that it'll coincide with, there may be some recommendations, but it'll coincide with Vermont Attorney General. As far as, I don't think it was a racial thing. I think they treat everybody in the community like that. And it started after 911, when we went to militarizing the police stations. I think we need to get back to community policing. I know two guys, one guy that works in the local bakery and another friend, my son's, that they weren't driving cars, but one of them was walking home at 2:00 in the morning, and the police pulled up and made him empty his pockets onto the hood of the car, you know? The other guy, two nights in a row, going to open the bakery at 4:00 in the morning, same thing. What's in your pockets, put it on the hood. We've gotta get back to community policing, helping. I think it's too much right now, revenue-based. I mean, the police team comes in on Saturday on his day off and sits on North Side Drive and tickets people, and it's for the revenue, you know? And the courts need the revenue because they've got so much coming in the door, and the police are raising the revenue, but they're sending more people. It's insanity that we need to stop. We need to get back to local community policing and treat everybody with dignity and respect.
I think we all know racism exists, and every village has their idiots, and Bennington certainly has theirs. But I think there's a feeling by many that that are very hurt, people who are good people, people who have gone out of their way to help anybody. This whole town has been portrayed around the world the same way that these idiots acted. I read a lot about Bennington at the state, national, world level. We are not the town that we were portrayed as, and not one local official or leader spoke on behalf of the good people of this town. And I think we missed the vote on a lot of conversations we could have had because I think people are upset the way that they were portrayed, and I think at this point they said, "Well, we tried, we voted..." And I think at this point, they said, "Well, we tried, we always tried to help people, and look how they've gotten treated." I think many people were concerned that soon after the committee started their discussion, we read on the front page of the paper that there was a group meeting behind closed doors. They didn't wanna wait to hear the end of the committee and the findings. They already decided that Bennington needs to have a group or a commission to deal with complaints or something. And again, I think we should have waited to hear what the committee said. We should have heard the findings. And then as a town, we should have discussed what we wanted to see happen. But again, I think many in Bennington are hurt that we've all been lumped in together with the idiots.
So we've got 15 minutes approximately before we do closing statements. So what I'd like to do is ask you to give very short answers, if you can, to these next few questions. And I wanna start off with retail marijuana. Now, the legislature, as you may know, is working on S-54, which would make retail recreational marijuana available. But part of that plan is the towns would have to pass a regulation of law that would allow it to come into the town. So this is gonna be an issue for a future select board sometime in the next couple of years. Do you support having a retail marijuana business here in Bennington? And what kind of conditions would you put on it, as briefly as you can? So with that, I can't remember. Nancy, if you start?
I'll start. I can start.
Good. Thank you.
I know what marijuana does to help people in a health aspect. I don't care what an adult does. I would not support it because I think we're gonna see in four or five years the impact that it's going to have on very young children, four or five and six years old, when their parents are going to be smoking inside. And I think we have enough issues that we're trying to deal with with kids. I don't want this to be something else that we're gonna have to see the kids go through in five or six years. So I wouldn't support it just based on that.
Peter?
Do I support retail sales of marijuana? I would say yes, yes, and yes. For too long, the drug companies have kept it from the public. You can get your OxyContin filled anywhere, but don't touch marijuana. The studies are proving that it is one hell of a medicine for many things. Kills cancer, helps people with pain, you know? We've been sold a bill of goods. And it's about time we come out of the woods and legalize it completely and let people make a profit from it. And we could have farming from it. We could have retail sales from it. Yes, yes, and yes. The only restriction I would put on, and I wouldn't put 21, I'd put 18. I'd put 18 on everything because 18-year-olds can go to war. They can vote. They can marry. We have to stop treating them like children.
Thank you, Peter. Colleen?
I am in total support of medical marijuana or any type of marijuana for the simple reason that the state of Vermont has already legalized it. And this may be the salvation that Bennington is looking for if they marketed it correctly, such as Massachusetts has done. It's very controlled, very regulated. There's all kinds of rules. But places like Colorado has completely brought themselves out of debt. They've started making loans to neighboring states. And it doesn't even have to be all marijuana. Hemp. Farmers, it might be the savior for Vermont farms if they started growing hemp along with their cows. There's just so much opportunity. It is a multi-billion dollar industry and it's already legal here. We might as well take advantage and profit and save Bennington with, by marketing it and distributing it in an effective, legal, and just like we sell alcohol, there should be no other difference. Alcohol is taxed. Marijuana should be taxed at the same rates. And you would be shocked how quickly we will bring ourselves out of debt by doing those. One, you talk about return on investment. You will see within a year a vast improvement in our economy.
Thank you, Colleen. Sarah?
Oh, yes. Yes, I would be in towards that. Frankly, I think we're a little late to the game. But possibly it might bring some tourism. Because New York, I believe, is not legal yet. So it might bring in some tourism for the Albany area for medical marijuana, or, I'm sorry, for marijuana. So if we jump on that right now, we might bring tourism from that area. And that would also help the economy, just not from marijuana, but for other areas in the area. Yeah, I just really think we're late to the game on that one.
Bruce?
I never thought I'd hear myself say this, but yes. Yeah, and we are late to the game, unfortunately. And the current statute that is going through the House, which I hope gets modified when it gets to the Senate, is that none of the tax from this will get to stay in the locality where it's sold. So that I would much prefer us to be able to get our cut. Thank you very much. We're gonna have the expenses. And Woodford is not. And therefore, it seems to me we should get our cut of the tax. But that's a different story. But yes, I'll say yes.
Okay. I just wanna add that I read it before you came here. And the proposed bill includes a local option tax of 2%. Alcohol is still a favorite.
That one I will vote for.
It's not a 1%. But marijuana is 2%, is the new kid on the block.
That's easier selling.
I absolutely support retail cannabis sales. I think we need them about five years ago. Yeah. I think that when the legislature legalized it and then left no mechanism for people to purchase it, it's kinda ridiculous. And I think, if possible, you know, I would love to see some way that we could guarantee that those dispensaries or stores, or whatever you wanna call them, be locally owned and operated. Yet on that, if it does include a 2% value-added tax in the final legislation, I'll vote for that all day.
Local option tax.
Local option.
Okay. So Tom, this question is for you on the more serious side. 2013, we saw a massive police sweep to try to pull off the streets drug dealers, people involved with distributing heroin and opioids and the like. And we had some second raids after that. Could you tell me if you thought those raids were effective? And is that where the town should be putting its priorities to deal with the opioid crisis?
Sure. I think they made for great press. I think the trouble with large-scale raids like this is that if you're, they don't address the actual root of the problem in that they don't affect the market. And as long as the market exists, people are gonna come in and fill those spots. You arrest one dealer, there's gonna be somebody else that's willing to take that up because they're money. We need to be focused on treating this as the disease that it is. Treat these people like patients, not like criminals, the users, I mean. As long as there is demand, there will be supply. So if we keep attacking the supply, we're gonna be throwing good money after bad. I'm not saying don't arrest drug dealers. But the emphasis of any sane drug program focuses on the user and putting them, getting them to places where they no longer feel the need to numb their lives.
Colleen?
Well, I think the war on drugs has been lost. The opioid epidemic is across the country. Bennington was labeled as the heroin capital. I don't know if it was the US or this area of the country. But that is crazy for little old Bennington. And we need to really start looking at solutions to this. And I don't even know what studies have been done here about usage and how the opioid epidemic is tying in correlation to the homeless epidemic. And we just need to really focus on what we can do. And some of this is gonna have to come from offering help here locally where there's beds available and these people can get in. And perhaps even transitional house for mother and children, where housing would come into play. Maybe even something in conjunction with the CDC Center for Job Training and Rehabilitation so that these young adults can become productive members within the society again. But until we address all these issues, it's not gonna change. And Brattleboro Retreat is another thing. They're closing soon. So it's just, there's no help for these people. And if you don't catch them in about a two or three-day window, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get them to go in for help.
Bruce?
Well, as one of my colleagues on the Bennington PD said, you really can't arrest yourself out of this opioid crisis. And that's true. It's not a law enforcement issue primarily. One of the dilemmas is that many of the sellers are also users. That's how they get the money for their use. So it seems to me, and there is action being taken here locally, but we really need to beef it up. I don't know that the select board can do that. We can be supportive of that. And I think the current board is very, there is a consortium of a variety of agencies in town. But we don't have anywhere near enough beds in Vermont to, for rehab. We are not remotely prepared to do the kind of work that it takes to move people out of incarceration and into treatment. The ones who want treatment, they need to be able to get treatment within 24 hours or you're just fighting a losing battle. And we don't have the capacity to do that as a state. We just don't. And because we haven't taken that part seriously. I'm not sure that that's a select board issue. I think that's a Vermont community issue, and I think it's a United States issue. It's everywhere.
Thank you, Bruce. Nancy?
Would you repeat it? I missed part of it.
Well, what I'm asking is, the opioid crisis was addressed 2013 with a massive raid over 100 officers and law enforcement agents. And then three or four follow-up raids. Do you feel these were effective in stopping the illegal drug trade in this area? And what should the town do to address the opioid use in the community?
I think the town and the state has taken a lot of steps in the right direction. I think we're way ahead of a lot of other states in the country. But I think people are also looking for some accountability and responsibility. They're tired of seeing the same people who are dealing get arrested over and over and over. And I'm shocked every week when somebody tells me where they live and there's a dealer living in their apartment building and there's nothing they can do about it. You know, there's, again, there's gotta be some balance. Yes, people need help, but it gets to a point where we have to address the other side of it too.
Sarah?
Sure, yes. I'm confident in the ability of the police responding and addressing this issue. Last week, I met with the opioid response team. And I feel like that's the right direction to move right now. 70%, this is a statistic I got from that, 70% of people want treatment. They're just not understanding where they should seek treatment. And I feel like that's the direction to move it is to, for the opioid response team and let them handle that and work with them in conjunction to handle this problem. So they have the capacity, they have the ability. And they have the plans to move that action, to drive that.
Thank you. Peter?
I believe it was yesterday at the Rockland, they arrested two people with enough fentanyl. And I think they said to kill 50,000 people. With those people, you've gotta throw a book at them, you know? You've gotta put them away. But most of what we're seeing is failure by the courts. You're not gonna arrest your way out of it. They're plea bargaining. They're back out on the street in days. We're gonna do it through education and through treatment. We need to start educating in elementary schools, you know? Letting them know to stay away from this stuff. Teaching them what it does to people, before and after photos. Have these people in recovery go speak to them, you know? And tell them what it's done to their life. The treatment, we need a facility here. Going back to the Southern Vermont thing, there you go with the dorms. We have a treatment center. We have a, how many beds does that hold? You know, and bring some professionals in, lease it out. And get, it would pay for itself in the community and just clean. We have a lot of theft going on because of it. You know, we've got a lot of damage around the town because of it. It would pay for itself just, we have a dollar lease on the tennis courts over, that bubble over in the Old Town Pool. That gentleman has a dollar lease on that place. The UCS just got a dollar lease at the rec center. The town give them a dollar lease to open up, for 100 years, to open up a treatment center. You know, and get the people in town that help they need. We're not gonna arrest our way out of it. But there are times when somebody's carrying that much fentanyl, they could kill that many people. You know, they know what they're doing. They should be, it should be a tempting murder, you know? Not a slap, I'm gonna arrest, put them away for 20, 30 years. Let them think about it.
I have one other question. I want it to be yes or no answers so we could go right to the closing statements and make it by 8 o'clock. And that is, I think Peter mentioned at the beginning that there was a tragic death in Bennington. A man who was homeless died under a bridge in downtown. And there's a group called Continuum Care. It's not an independent group. It's basically a consortium of different agencies that get together to talk about the use of federal funds to try to address some of these issues like how to provide services to the homeless, how to deal with the fact that a person can't get from Bennington to the only available shelter, bed, and panel or is uncomfortable trying to hitchhike down there in the middle of winter. So would you support or require the town administration to be an active member in continuum of care, which it may not be at this point in time? Tom?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
I'm not really enough with that topic.
Okay. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Too many questions.
You need answers to before you...
Well, yeah, just specific questions about, yeah.
You need more information.
Yes.
Colleen?
At this point, I would say no, not without knowing all the specifics of what that would entail to the community of Bennington.
Okay. So each of you has two minutes to provide a closing statement. I'm gonna cut you off since, looking at the clock, we barely got that amount of time. So Colleen, if you'd like to close?
I think my biggest reasons for running and for going forward to seek nomination and election for select board is because I love Bennington. I grew up here. My family's all here. We've been here for more generations than my uncle could even remember how many that it was. And the town has turned to something that I'm just not sure what direction we're going in. And it just seems we're doing all these projects with nothing, no sight or no vision or no long-term plan of where we're gonna end up in 20 years or 10 years or even five years. And the money that's being spent, I think is being spent recklessly, almost like drunken sailors on a Saturday night with a three-day leave from the service. And I think we just need to tighten... I think we just need to tighten everything down and then go forward. And once we decide what the vision is for Bennington, move on at that period, and then look forward to what investments we can make or what we can do to make money or bring in business or attract tourism. But right now, I think that the taxes are overwhelming to lifetime Vermont citizens, and we just can't afford the taxes here in Bennington any longer.
Thank you, Colleen. Nancy?
I'm running because I want people in Bennington to start being, able to be involved in discussions and decisions. As I've said, the questions, I've repeatedly gone before with the board, they haven't been trick questions, they haven't been hard questions, and the board refuses to answer. We need to focus on Bennington. We have too many county and regional groups being formed, and each year, they're deciding how the future of Bennington is going to be. I'll guarantee people, Manchester, Brattleboro, Housick Falls, North Adams, they're not worrying about Bennington, Vermont. They're focusing on their towns. We need to focus on Bennington, and the only way you get transparency on the select board is you elect people who are going to put the citizens first, who are going to put all these various groups and committees before the people of Bennington.
Thank you. Peter?
Bennington has a lot to offer. We could get back to good. Everybody's feeling the strain everywhere in the country, and that's in Bennington. But we've lost a lot. We're not out of major interstate. We've lost a lot of manufacturing. High energy costs have cost us a lot of manufacturing. But with recruiting, proper recruiting, we could bring some manufacturing back. With an incubator building, we could build, that's how we got drill presses, the company. There's other companies, we used to have an incubator building. A friend of mine started a music studio in there. It provided him a space, he paid $100 a month in rent, and so many musicians here use that to get their CDs out and things like that. We need an incubator building, and we need to get spending under control. I think there has been a lot of wasteful spending. I think we need a more open board. You know, people come to the board, and I see it, I see it all the time when I watch the meetings. You know, your three minutes is up. Nope, you're fine. Nope, nope, you're done. That needs to stop. They are taxpayers, they are members of this community, they need to be listened to, you know? And if you don't have the patience for that, get the hell off the board. Let somebody else sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Sure, yes. Thank you for coming tonight. I ask for your vote as an active community member, small business owner, property owner, entrepreneur, and resident who believes in Bennington's future. While speaking at an event like this is new to me, I'm confident in my strengths, know that I'm willing to work hard, and have pride to say that I'm someone who gets things done. I look forward to speaking with you and listening to you, residents of Bennington, and bless us to listen, so I'm listening to all the residents of Bennington about their ideas for the future. Thank you for watching.
Bruce?
Well, why should you vote for me? Well, if you vote for me, what you get, I believe, is positive leadership, leadership that listens, that builds up, does not tear down, leadership that encourages openness to new ideas, leadership that demands truth from ourselves, from our leaders, the rest of our leadership, but also from our community. I'm interested in encouraging participation in open and transparent government. The policies of the select board are now available online. I think the webpage can become much more user-friendly and much more usable for all of us. I also don't want to discourage voter participation and trust in our system, and I think it's really important that we understand how our, how good our election system is. Finally, I think if you vote for me, you're going to get someone who is going to work to build trust, that we can work together and grow and do better things than we have done. I'm a person who did not grow up here, but I moved here, and I chose to stay here, and I chose to stay here because I love this town, and I think that's just as important. I think we hear too much anger, and we need to listen to each other and grow from each other, and that, in that way, Bennington can become a better place. I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Tom.
I love my town, and I'm running for select board because I refuse to give up on it. That said, one person alone isn't going to get the job done. We are all Bennington, and we have to all work together in order to bring Bennington forward into the future. I would want to hear every idea from every citizen. If you have an idea and you want to bring it before town government, you should do so. We need every idea. I think the only thing that many of us up here right now can agree to is what we're doing right now is a quaint work. The idea that's going to save the world might be sitting right out there. We aren't going to know unless you have the wherewithal to bring it forward. So we need to educate our citizens on how to become more interactive with their government. Get off your Facebook pages, stop complaining, start doing. Please vote for me for Bennington Select Board. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to thank Peter Brady, Tom Haley, Colleen Harrington, Bruce Lee Clark, Sarah Parent, and Nancy White for putting themselves before the public to run for public office. It's a thankless job, it can be a rewarding job, but it's an important job. We don't get the government we deserve, we get the government we vote for. So, this has been the 2020 Bennington Select Board Candidate Forum, hosted by Bennington Tonight. Thank you, Mike Bethel, for organizing this. Thank you, candidates, and thank you very much, members of the audience.